I'd like to call this June 4 meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salley.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis. Councilman Williams. Three present.
Tonight, as we rise for our moment of silence, I'd like to ask each of you in the community to hold a special thought in your prayers and thoughts this evening for the Blaylock and Maynard family with their recent loss, and also Ryan Williams, Councilman Williams' family, and the Bates family. So if we could all rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes. Let's wait just a second. Councilman Shelton's getting his book here. No changes to the agenda. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Some move.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
This brings us to our old business portion of the meeting. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held May 21, 2009. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Some move.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. We've had time to review over these. Are there any comments that need to be amended? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item three, consider on second and final reading ordinance 090-507 related to automated traffic enforcement sponsor Chief Bob Terry.
Mayor and council, this is the same item that came before you the last time regarding the red light cameras. And I've got Captain Maxwell here if anybody wants to ask any difficult questions. We recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve on second reading?
Some move.
Second.
Second. We've got our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Okay. Seeing no comments, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now we have our consent agenda, which has three items on it, four, five, and six. Set a date for a public hearing on ordinance 090-608 rezoning properties between West Fifth and Seventh Streets and North Cedar Avenue, Mailer Avenue, from MS Medical Services to CL Local Commercial and CL Local Commercial to UNF University. Item five is consider approval of purchasing of sanitation carts. And item six, considering awarding bids for transformers and cable. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
One question of Mr. Brown about the sanitation carts. That's virtually the same, that's virtually the price we've been paying when we first bought those several years ago, right?
It's within a couple of dollars.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
Any other comments?
How have they held up?
Real well. Originally we're buying more, there's people getting extra carts and a few houses being built. And all the apartments are getting themselves up, smaller apartments.
Very good. Any further comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to our new business. Item seven, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 090-506 amendments to the zoning code regarding the storage of vehicles sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, under the current zoning code requirements, the storage of more than 10 vehicles is permitted only as an auto wrecker service storage yard. Auto wrecker service storage yards are permitted only in the HM Heavy Manufacturing District and are permitted as special exceptions in the LM Light Manufacturing District. When the current zoning code was adopted in 2001, the location of vehicle storage lots was specifically restricted due to concerns over the perceived proliferation of such uses in the city. The primary concern was the number and location of properties being used for the storage of wrecked or damaged vehicles. During the past several years, the planning and codes departments have received a number of inquiries about the storage of vehicles. Earlier this year, Mr. Freddie Duncan formally petitioned for an amendment to the zoning code. The establishment of a new use classification with specific requirements is proposed. This classification would be entitled vehicle storage lots. An amendment to section 206, additional standards of the zoning code is recommended to establish specific standards for this classification. The standards are shown on the screen, and I'll briefly go through those. They must have paved surface parking areas. The parking areas of the storage lots must comply with our parking lot design requirements. All landscape yard requirements would have to be met. When they're located adjacent to residential properties, they must be provided top three screen and buffer yard. No wrecked vehicles would be permitted, and all vehicles located in a storage lot would have to be operable and street legal. No vehicle could be closer than 20 feet from any street right of way. No surfacing of vehicles or sales of vehicles would be permitted. No storage of vehicle parts or tires would be permitted. Long-term storage, which we classify as more than 60 days, can be permitted, provided that the vehicles which require license plates and registrations, that those will remain current. And it's the responsibility of the property owner to assure that those vehicles meet those requirements. And finally, the vehicles that would be falling under this classification would include automobiles, trucks, vans, buses, motorcycles, all-terrain vehicles, boats, jet skis, motorhomes, and similar vehicles. This amendment would also require two other amendments in the zoning code. One would be to alter the current section 206.15, to delete any references in it regarding the storage of vehicles. And finally, to amend the chart of permitted uses to show that in the HM, LM, and CI districts, this would be a permitted use. The proposed amendments have been approved by the planning commission and are recommended for adoption by the planning department.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Our motion and second. Discussion by the council.
Clarify the 206.23A surfaced with Portland cement or asphaltic concrete. Is that?
It's concrete or asphalt. That's the technical term for it.
Okay. So just standard?
Concrete or asphalt. And that's the same requirements that we have for all the parking areas in Cookeville.
Any parking lot in anywhere? Okay.
Basically, the goal here was that these areas would look just like a typical parking lot.
Go ahead. No. The only other thing, so you said to meet, comply with parking lot design, so would that also require the landscape borders within parking area?
No, only on the perimeter of the landscape. But the parking lot design, what that implies, where you don't have triple or quadruple or multiple stacked cars, that you'd have the lane so that it still looked like a parking lot is what the goal was to allow these.
And are there, are there design requirements that would prevent, like leaking fluids, oils, and things? I mean, I know there are skimmers in some of the larger parking lots, are there not, that prevent, that collect the oils and you skim them off the water before it goes into the stormwater?
Well, that would fall under our stormwater requirements, and I don't know if we have anything particular about that, Greg.
That would have to follow the detention requirements, because there is a water quality picture in the land.
Okay. Does that need to be noted in here? Because it says just to provide adequate drainage.
Well, this, we don't have that, what you're referring to, noted about any other type of parking facility in our zoning code. That's enforced through our stormwater requirements. I mean, our zoning code includes references to the stormwater requirements, but it's not specifically addressed under parking.
Okay. But it would still be enforced?
It would still be enforced, yes. As do with impervious and pervious services, and that's where that's kicked in.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Any further comments from the council? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item eight, consider on first reading ordinance 090-612, amending title 18, chapters one and two of the Cookeville Municipal Code relative to water and sewer rate increase sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently completed a water wastewater rate review of our rate structure, looking at different aspects of it. There were some questions about capacity fees and new development and those sort of things. And we finished that up, have met with the council on a couple occasions, and have, we're presenting this in ordinance form tonight, which is a result of that rate study, and would recommend its passage.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
We have our motion and second. Discussion by the council.
You think this will take us through the next several years of having the funds necessary for our growth and expansion as needed?
Yeah, we think it will. That's why we tried to set it at three years, and then at the end of that three-year period, step back and take a look at it and see where we are. You know, I think there was, and the study concluded that, you know, it may need to go up a few more years, but we said, let's just set it at three, and see where we are, see if conditions changed, and those type of things. I've got, I've got a couple slides if you want to see where it puts us in relation to other cities and those type of things. That's the ordinance. But Ryan had asked one day, that's just the bills, you can't hardly see that, but the, you probably can't see it there, Ryan had asked one day. We're currently, that's the water at 15, but this is where we're going to go, and these are all the cities within 10,000 to 103,000. And I'm sorry, it doesn't show up well here, but it sort of gives you a relation that next year, if you do these rates, this is where we're going to go through in relation to everybody else, but you've got to understand, they're all, most people are changing their rate structures too. This is based on our rates as of last June, so.
Okay.
Sewers, same way. Sewers, this is where we are sewer-wise, and this is where we'd go. Out of those, I think the sewer, the water was, there was 243 water systems surveyed, which crossed the state of Tennessee. And at that point in time, we were the 34th lowest system surveyed out of that 243. The sewer, Cookeville's rate system was, there was 148 systems surveyed, and we were number 51 out of that sampling, which got pretty much all of them that I could tell. There was a few that I didn't see in there, but.
Certainly, the study that was conducted on all this was extensive, you know, having, when we were presented with all that information.
Yeah, there's a few big projects that's coming down the pike, you know, the annexation, southeast annexation sewer projects, there's a water plant expansion. We wanted to try to get these rate structures to where we'd be able to try to fund those as we go along.
Very good. Any further comments by the council? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
You can come up and make a comment or something different.
I'm Deborah, and thank you for this. And I was, just our question, are you rounding, since we're doing this by 1,000 gallon usage, are you rounding up or down per monthly bill?
Well, it'll be read on the thousands. I mean, that's how we read them now.
Right. So if you're under, then it waits till next month, and then, or do you bill the thousand automatically if you don't meet up?
If you're 500?
Yeah.
How do they, they round up? Okay.
Okay. So potentially, you could, you could always be paying 1,000 whether you use 1,000 or not. So that's like now the new minimum, as opposed to 2,000.
I'm saying I'm rounding around to the 1,000 gallons.
Okay. So each month, so like if it's?
Well, yeah, the minimum bill's going to be $3 and something. I was just trying to remember how they read those meters, the meter readers, how they kick it in. I think they can only kick in per 1,000 gallons. So they can only read and record per thousands. You can't get down into the hundreds.
Right. But is it, the billing, you know, sometimes it's, you know, if you're 500, it could go to zero, nothing, not billed for usage that month, and then the next month, when you're at 1,000 or at 1,500, then get billed for 1,000, or get billed for 2,000. So then you're not, I mean, so I was just wondering how that was. Because if we're, if part of this reason for this, and it was in the paper, is to promote wise and efficient water use and to conserve water, then to encourage that is to, you know, you want to be able to encourage instead of having people, instead of 2,000 being the minimum, you know, you can use up to 2,000, now it's using up to 1,000 no matter what. I was just asking, is all.
Well, yeah.
It's always rounded, it's always rounded in the 1,000 gallons. It's always been that way. I don't know if it affects the usage at all.
The $3.69 is a thousand, is for 1,000 gallons.
Right. Before, under the current rate structure, you paid for 2,000 gallons whether you used it or not.
Right.
So now you're paying only for, I mean?
Yeah. 1,000 is the minimum now, so those people that don't use 2,000, they're getting a break.
If you were paying for 2,000 before and only used 500, you were wasting 1,500. Now there's going to be 500 waste, conceivably. So the minimum is now reduced to 1,000 gallons, $3.69.
Right. But I was just wondering, because if you're at 500 and it's billed 1,000, I mean, they could re, they could record it at zero that month, and then the next month, it could be 1,500, and then you would be billed for 1,000. I mean, there's lots of ways to do it that, so I just was, wanted to know what it was.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Deborah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Item nine, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 090-609, providing a tax levy for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year sponsor Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, the first ordinance I have for you to consider will set the tax rate for property within the city limits of Cookeville. This ordinance establishes that rate at 87 cents, which is the same rate we had for this past fiscal year. That 87 cents would be allocated between the general fund with 63 cents to the general fund, 4 cents going to our economic development fund, and 1 penny to the quality of life fund, and then 19 cents to the general obligation debt service fund. And the 87 cents tax rate generates approximately $5,600,000 for all those funds, and that's roughly about 65, a little over $65,000 per penny on the tax rate, but I'd recommend your approval.
All right. Do we have a motion and second to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Our motion and second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 10, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 090-6010, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year sponsor Mr. Mike Davidson.
Again, our contributions to our nonprofits, we have not recommended any changes. We ask those nonprofits to hold those, their request for funding this year at the same level as they did this past year. We did not increase any funding with the exception of one, I'd like to point out to you, which is the rehabilitation center. And that went up a little over $1,000, and that's because of the new facility that was built out there for the rehab center, and that's the additional cost for our 50% share in that lease payment out there with the county. The total contributions, I'm not going to outline the, address each one, but the total contributions this year is $586,614, and I'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and second to approve?
Some move.
Second.
We have our motion and second. Any discussion by the council? Just have to say, looking over this list, these are some very well-deserving organizations. It's a shame we can't do more, but we certainly appreciate what they provide to the community, so.
I'm grateful that we did not have to cut, and that we were able to continue giving at the same rate as we did last year.
Very good. Okay. Any further comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 11, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 090-6011, making appropriations for the various funds, departments, and agencies of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year sponsor Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I'll try to keep my comments as brief as possible. There's not been a lot of changes to the budget since our work sessions back in May. And the general fund, I probably have the most comments about that. And stop me at any time. I'll go through each one of our funds, and then at the end, or stop me at any time if you have questions about those. But in the general fund, we have estimated revenue of $19,973,000. We have our operating expenditures and transfers of $19,962,000. And we also have an additional transfer, which we will take out of our fund balance of $170,000. That's a one-time transfer that we will move over to their general improvement fund to help with the improvements to Dogwood Park, what we call Phase Two right now. That $170,000 is in the budget. When you factor all that in, the revenue or operating expenditures, that one-time transfer of $170,000, we're looking to decrease our fund balance $158,000 next year. With that being said, we have projections for June 30 of 2010 of still having a $5.8 million fund balance, even decreasing it to that $158,000. The revenue estimates, just to kind of give you an idea, we've decreased the total revenue 2.7% from what we'd budgeted in fiscal year '09. Right now, winding up this fiscal year, June 30, our revenue estimates are right on target. We've been very fortunate there. And our department heads, just in terms of expenditures ending this year, they've been doing a great job in trying to reduce their spending. And in total, though, for next year, we decreased revenue 2.7%. Sales tax, we've got a 0% growth projected there. We're looking at $9,631,000 in sales tax this year, and also for next year, that's what we budgeted. Again, property tax, it's allocated to the general fund, is a little over, is $4,600,000. Just to point out a couple revisions since our work session with revenue, I increased our hall income tax projections $105,000. So that total that I have projected there, I believe, is $205,000 for hall income tax, and increased the property tax rate just based on growth, some numbers we got from the assessor, another $10,000 since our, since our work sessions in May. On the expenditure, well, that's just a summary there of revenue again. On the expenditure side, I have some changes, or not changes, but from '09, or fiscal year '09, we've increased utilities $110,000. I showed that $170,000 transfer out of our fund balance to, for improvements over at our new Dogwood Park. We also have three vacant positions right now that we have not put funding in the budget for those. We'll wait and look at that again in 2010 and '11 for that fiscal year. And we've eliminated capital equipment in all the departments, have no capital budgeted at all for 2009 and '10. And since the work sessions back in May, we've been able to reinstate the step increases for employees, and we have that in there. And as you all see, as you drive by the fuel pumps, the price keeps going up at the, at the pump, so I've increased fuel in a couple of the departments, another $12,000. Those are the revisions since our work sessions back in May, and with expenditures. Total expenditures, again, $19,904,849 in the general fund. We have transfers at $170,000, I mentioned. We also transferred $54,000 to the animal shelter and $3,000 to our tree board. For total transfers, expenditures in the general fund of $20,132,000. And again, looking at having a $5.8 million fund balance at June 30 of 2010. And I'm just going to keep moving on unless you have some questions. Our State Street Aid Fund?
I have a question back if we're going to take questions as we go. The fuel, what percent increase did you add to that for the $12,000? What percentage increase is that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the actual percentage increase. I basically have it, the price at the pump right now is, if it exceeds $2.55, then we're going to start eating into what we have budgeted for fuel. So right now, it's at 2, depends on where you're at, but 230 or so. So we've got another 25 cents to go, if you're just looking at the pump price.
Okay. And then, as we had talked about, the steps, that would be looked at?
That'll be looked at in February, based on revenue estimates and getting back together with everyone and talking with the council about that, yes.
And then they would be retroactive?
Retroactive, back to July. Yes.
Thanks.
Then our State Street Aid Fund, which is where we handle improvements to streets around town, have total estimated expenditures of $775,000 with estimated revenue of $716,000, and looking at spending into that fund balance, $59,000. Again, we have projected to have a 600, over $600,000 fund balance for State Street Aid next year, by the end of next year. Then our solid waste sanitation fund, estimated revenue of $1,525,000 with estimated expenditures of $1,635,000. Again, a fund balance ending next year, $471,000. We've had that fund balance as low as $250,000 over the years, so we still think we're okay there by decreasing it $110,000 next year. Our quality of life fund has estimated revenue of $1,738,000. That's primarily grant money coming in to help with Rails with Trails, the development of that project. Have expenditures of $1,800,000 budgeted, which will lead into fund balance, $61,000 is what's projected right now. Still leaving us with a $288,000 fund balance at June 30 of 2010. Our economic development fund, again, that's where we're handling the development of the new industrial park, business park, out south of I-40. We have estimated revenue, which is primarily property tax, of $268,000. We also have another $285,000, which will be the county's half of their share of the cost out there at the industrial park. We have total expenditures estimated at $772,000 next year, and we believe we'll have a fund balance of $158,000 by the end of next year in that fund. We also have in that fund is where we're paying the counties, our debt to the county on the purchase of that property out there. It's handled through this fund also. And our debt service fund handles payments on all their general obligation bonds and notes that we have. And we have estimated revenue there of $3,92,000 and estimated expenditures of $3,82,000 next year. Projected fund balance at the end of next year, $5.2 million, almost $5,300,000 next year. And our employee health insurance fund, estimated revenue of $3,359,000 and estimated expenditures of $3,310,000. Again, we look to add a little bit of money to that fund balance right now. It sets almost at $5 million there. Our work comp liability fund, estimated revenue of $535,000 with estimated expenditures of $522,000. A couple of, three other funds, our drug fund, we got estimated expenditures of $19,700. We may, depending on the outcome of the, that $200,000, the police department confiscated a few months ago, depending on the outcome of that money, we may come back to you with a budget amendment, asking to spend some of that money for patrol cars in the police department and other equipment that they're looking at. But right now, expenditures at 19,7 for drug fund. Our tree board fund, we got budgeted $2,500, and our animal control fund, $179,000. Just our water quality department, estimated revenue of $14 million with estimated expenditures of $14,421. And I'm not going to go into any detail on all of the divisions within the utilities, because we have several divisions in all of them. The gas department has estimated revenue of $12,783,000 with expenditures estimated at $12,221,000 in the gas department. thousand dollars in the Gas Department. And our Electric Department has estimated revenue of fifty-three million, eighty-three thousand dollars with estimated expenditures of fifty-three million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We have some reserves there to help with debt payments that are associated with annexations in that area and settlements with upper Cumberland. So we have some reserves there to help with that, but have estimated cash reserves at the end of next year for the Electric Department of over eight million dollars. Our Customer Service Department is funded by all the utilities and our Sanitation Department have estimated revenue of a million, one million, fifty thousand dollars and estimated expenditures equal to that, one million, fifty thousand. And the final department, our division within the city, I guess, is their hospital. And they have estimated revenue of two hundred and twenty-five million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand. They have total estimated expenditures, including expansions and capital, of two hundred and thirty-eight million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. And I know it's been real quick going through all the funds. Like I said, there hadn't been any significant changes to any of the, of the funds since we met in our last work session, but I'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And our motion is our second. Any questions or comments by the council?
Only comment I have to make is, it does seem like we've run through this and that it's quick, but the city and Mike Davidson and everybody has been working on this for a long time, and this is the culmination of a great deal of work, not just something that came about quickly. And a lot of time, effort, blood, sweat, and tears.
We all start work on this back in January, and it finally comes to a head here in June.
I also think it's important to note that our utility, all our utilities, also, there is capital budget expenses in there because of the way they're funded, right?
There is capital in each of the utilities.
Each of the utilities, maintaining their fleets.
They are, they are. There is capital budgeted in the utilities.
And hopefully, hopefully that money works out, we can still be able to maintain our police, police department with new cars as they need, because I know they have a plan to in place. So I hope that that works out, that we can fund that later as well.
Any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consider a warning bid for the handrail replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. Sponsor, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids on a budgeted item to replace some handrails down at our wastewater treatment plant. The low bidder was Stone Steel, which is a local company, forty-two thousand, eight forty-eight point four seven, and we'd recommend the low bidder.
All right, do we have a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
At this time, we've concluded our regularly scheduled business. We open up the floor now for a hearing of citizens and/or delegations, and we offer you up to three minutes. If you'd like to come and speak your mind, we're glad to have you. Just identify yourself and.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Ellie Lenhart, and I'm the chairperson of the Westside Business Association, and I'm here as a representative of the Westside Business Association. Part of the reason that I'm here is that one of the things we've discussed in our Westside meetings is that we need to let the people know who we are and where we are, because it's amazing how many people we run into and they say, "Where's Westside?" So we thought that along with brochures and websites, we'd actually start coming to council meetings and sharing with you what we are doing on West Side. We do meet the first Tuesday of every month, and we just met this past Tuesday, so it was timely that there was a council meeting for me to attend. So thank you for having me. What I would like to let you know are some of the things that are happening on West Side currently. We have an installation of some photographs of buildings around West Side with a statement of what the building was and just a little bit of history of the building. And those installations are going to be a part of what we call the West Side History Walk. And what we're doing is working with property owners on West Side to actually install photographs that have been placed on aluminum so that they're permanent, and they'll be installed on buildings, and there will be a history walk where they're numbered, and people can actually walk around West Side and learn a little bit about the past and about the buildings. We have seventeen pictures currently ready to be installed, and we hope to be installing those over the next maybe two weeks, so that when, I think there's a parade scheduled for the depot, and we hope to have those first seventeen pictures in place in time for the parade, so that people can hopefully wander around and linger and look at those pictures. Also to let you know, and I hope you'll visit West Side to see this, we will be installing, with the help of the city, which we appreciate, we'll be installing flower baskets on the lamp posts on West Side. We have eighteen flower baskets that we're going to start with, and we will have those all at the entrances to West Side and then on various posts throughout the streets, along the streets. So we're very excited about that, and I think that's really going to add to the whole personality of the area. The next thing to let you know is that, again, thanks to Gail's office and Mr. Shipley's office, we are going to have our first cruise-in this Saturday night. We have had interest from the public to have an antique car cruise-in, and we will have that this Saturday night from five to eight. And we have a section of Broad Street closed from Cedar to Oak, and we're very excited about that. Quickly, the fourth thing that's happening very soon is the Dinosaur Museum, the prehistoric museum that is located in a section of the Wilson Building. The Wilson Building is being renovated slowly, but it is being renovated, and we're excited about that. And the Dinosaur Museum is due to open at any time, and if you haven't had a chance to pop in over there, it's really quite amazing. So we're excited about that happening. The fifth thing that's happening is that on June the nineteenth and twentieth, we are going to have a music festival on West Side. Since West Side enjoys verbs, the name of our music festival is Picks and Grins, and it is a country music festival. On Friday night, June the nineteenth, we are going to have a Texas Swing Band from Nashville. They will be set up at the depot. The Texas Swing Band, I understand, is really quite awesome. I haven't heard the CD yet, but I've heard he's really quite awesome. On Saturday, we will have three local bands playing at the depot. In addition to that, we will have art from artists, local artists, fine craft and art displayed on West Side, so that people who come for the music can also wander around and look at art. And hopefully go in restaurants and retailers and maybe spend a little money. So we hope that that festival will go well, and we would love for you to come and be a part of that. Posters will be going up tomorrow, and again, the Picks and Grins Music Festival. Also in our meeting, just very quickly, I want to share a couple of thoughts that people on West Side, the business owners and property owners have shared. The first is that we appreciate the efforts of the police to this point as far as the graffiti, but we have property owners and business owners who are still very concerned about the graffiti around town and about what, if anything, that means. And so there is just concern about that. The next thing is, we would like to ask that you consider, and I know that there are pros and cons to this, but we would like to ask that you consider that we install a three-way stop at Oak and Broad. And included in the three-way stop, we would like to see a pedestrian crosswalk from Broad, from the Broad Street side of the businesses to the parking lot that's near the train tracks, because right now there is a gray parking lot, but there's no crosswalk. We've also have people who express concerns about visibility in cars pulling out and also concerns about visibility of pedestrians crossing the street. And on a final note, several people at the West Side meeting asked about the status of our truck petition that was brought to you at a past meeting. At that meeting, we discussed about the possibility of a meeting bringing people who would have interest in the truck traffic question, and just wanted to let you say that the West Side folks and the West Side Business Association is more than happy to help you in any way and would love to be a part of that meeting. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you for your comments, and that's quite the calendar that you all have going on. That's good.
And that's just June.
And that's just June. Lot happening in the West Side. Any other comments? Do we have anybody else, any other delegations or citizens that would like to make comments?
I would like to make a comment about the West Side. I really appreciate what's been going on the last few years, and as someone who lives in the heart of Cookeville, one of my great pleasures is to be able to walk from my house to the West Side, and I always use that as an excuse to eat and drink a little bit more at the West Side restaurants, because I think if I've walked there and walked back home, then I've obviously burned up the calories. I don't think it's working too well, though.
Good thing you're walking.
[laughing].
I would echo that, too, and I appreciate what West Side merchants have done. If you all haven't seen these pictures that they're doing on these metal, they're really awesome, and to, you know, to take a step back and see what these buildings once looked like and what they once housed, it's really neat. So I'll be anxious to see them, see them going up. A couple of them are going up on two of my buildings, and they're really neat.
Very good. Yes, it's nice that the business owners and property owners in that part of town have really kept that area alive. It could have, it's hard to imagine what it would have been like without the interest that you all share over there, so I applaud you and your efforts, and we'll do what we can to help you out over there. Any other comments? Mr. Shipley?
None from me, sir.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have the Ricky and Alma Show.